I'm going to call out to order our commission meeting of October the 20th. Call or roll, please.
Vogel.
Here.
AG. Here. Harris.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Dykstra.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the agenda.
Invocation placed.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get this. Okay, we do have a quorum. My invocation, I do not see our ministers here, so if not, if you're able to stand, please stand. We'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
To our heaven. Our great name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever.
You'll join me in the presentation of the flag salute. Profession, attention, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the agenda.
I remember we adopted the agenda in table items five and six until litigation is over.
I second the motion.
Now, wait a minute, okay. We have a motion and a second to, let me repeat what you said, to approve the agenda without items number five and six.
Yes, sir.
Item, and we have a second. Okay, any discussion?
Discussion, is there a reason that you're wanting, how come we can't resolve the issue of this?
Well, first of all, it's not a good, it's not good timing because there is litigation and the court case is pending, so there's not any use discussion until the court case is.
Could you explain the court case to me, like what's going on in it?
Huh?
How does the court case affect what item five is?
Well, we can't take any action on it, and we don't need to make any discussion because we don't want to affect until, we don't know what the court's going to rule.
Well, why do we need to go to court on something we could resolve?
Well, we don't have a choice now. We didn't file a suit, we didn't.
Suits already been filed.
Somebody else filed a suit against us, so it's not our decision.
To detach isn't our decision.
Do what?
You're saying to detach isn't something that we can do?
We, according to the ordinances and everything for the city, we have to have a hearing and everything else. The commissioners have not seen any kind of request or anything.
I'd like clarification from legal on that.
Okay.
Because I understand that there are two items, I'm not sure, because all I have to look at is the agenda really, but as I understand it, item five is a discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a proposal, which I have taken to mean the petition, since that's the only proposal that has come forward that is in court, and to do that, the argument in court is that the city clerk has determined the petition insufficient as to the ownership. If it's insufficient as to the ownership, it's not really a petition in front of you. So, basically, if you want to go to a quote proposal, I mean, I'm just not sure how you get there. The second one is approval of an ordinance, which again, I assume, is a desire to detach the property essentially on the commission's own motion. That does not require public hearing, and it is not affected by current litigation.
Where is the ordinance?
Where is the ordinance?
I created this, I've got it.
Well, thank you, but that's my job, Commissioner Shaw.
You can't legally do that.
I have three versions, I have three versions that I prepared over the weekend, depending on where we were going with this, because I don't know where we're going with this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're ready to talk about it tonight. There's a lot more, there's too much unknown, there's pending court.
None of that is in our package.
Yes, ma'am, it was six o'clock, Commissioner AG, I did not have clerical assistance.
Well, see, I didn't even get a copy.
I had already sent my clerical people home, her stay. It's hard to do stuff at 6:30.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
No, I'm just saying, that's why it's not in your package.
Yeah, it would be difficult for me to vote on an ordinance I haven't seen, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I didn't even see the agenda until about 2:00 this afternoon, so I didn't even know item five or six were on.
It's subject to discussion.
Oh, we need to, we've got discussion, I think we probably just need to resolve this, whatever the commission wants to do, and they're going to have a motion on the floor to remove item number five and six from our agenda until litigation is resolved. Is that the way I understood it?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote. Yeah, we have a second, by Commissioner Hall, what about going here?
It's not showing.
It's not showing.
It's not showing the phone. I want to call roll.
Okay.
Yes.
Shaw. No, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Paul.
Yes.
Dykstra.
No.
Vogel.
Epstein.
Yes.
Do I get to vote?
No.
Oh, Maynard.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't do any of the numbers.
Commissioner Harrod's, motion carries, okay. Then we will move on with the agenda. Do we need to vote on that full agenda?
No, it did.
We just did with that.
Just start with number two.
Okay, yeah, consider approval of the consent agenda.
I have questions, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to get some clarification on agenda, on the meeting minutes on October 6th, I believe some of the language that was put in there I need to discuss with legal. The statement that was made in regard to the conflict of interest wasn't clear to me. The motion that Commissioner Hall and I made, I think was, and it's my understanding, and correct me where I'm wrong, but it was my understanding to include business.
Business relationships.
Business relationships, property owners, and tribal affiliated nations, and that's not in that.
I, I would have been hard, I was hard pressed to help Philister pair the minutes on that point because our discussion was so far ranging.
There was a lot of confusion that night.
May I suggest that you just pull the minutes from October 6th and let us work on them and bring them back and see if they need to be in a different form, and that's probably the best way to do that.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, I think if someone's going to, if someone's going to move to approve the consent agenda, they can just do so and say, accept the minutes of October 6th.
Okay.
Well, I thought the final decision on that was that you were going to look at each, each one of the commissioners, that doesn't make, I wouldn't err down to anything. Anytime there's any kind of a conflict, then that you're responsible to let us know, that's.
Does that include past conflicts too?
Yeah, let's, let's bring it back, and so that we can have a fuller discussion, and y'all understand exactly where we are.
Okay. Do you have any more questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move item C on to, as an agenda item for a later date, to discuss the license payment report. I'd also like to discuss more fully the Pioneer Library System Audit. I saw a number of things I have questions on, so I'd like for both of those to be placed as later agenda items.
Which ones?
I'm here.
C and D.
C and D.
So, C and D, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on. Okay, so, if you want to do it that way, that's approve the consent agenda, except the minutes of October 6th, and item C and D, and then if you approve that, then we'll immediately discuss C and D, and then you'll go on.
So what, I mean, on the library, what, we don't have any interest in it anyhow, the building's the only thing we have interest in.
That's correct.
I mean, we don't, I don't care what the audit says, because we don't have any money involved in it.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I'd still like to be educated on that process, Deputy Mayor. There are things in there that is part of the city to me, when you look at it.
Mr. Mayor, we'd certainly love to have Ann Masters come and speak to the commission on their operations and their.
Okay, so, I've heard a motion to approve the consent agenda, then I've heard that we want, we have a challenge with B, C, and D. Do we want to amend that motion to have B, C, and D?
I have a second, yes.
No, okay.
Do we have, she made the motion?
Okay, I have a last question.
Who made the motion?
Can you make them on?
I did.
He did.
No one's said it, so it's open for a motion now.
I'd like to change the motion, I move to change the motion, to make exceptions to B, C, and D for later clarification.
Okay, that's a motion to amend, and you're second on that motion. Y'all, you're just making it hard.
Approve the agenda, approve the, approve the exception to those items.
It's really, go ahead, that's a motion, it's a motion to amend.
Okay, is there a second to her motion?
There's a second to her motion.
I'm not hearing a second, that motion fails, so, we have a motion then to?
You have a motion, waiting for a second.
Yeah, waiting for a second on the consent agenda.
Okay, I, second, second.
Okay, we have a motion to second the consent agenda, let's vote.
Okay, it's working now.
Is it working now?
Yeah. Motion carries. Let's see, all right, let's move on to item number three, Commissioners' comments.
I'd like to offer comment in regard to what Vice Mayor said earlier in regard to the detachment. I believe we as a city need to represent all of the people's interests here. I believe that we're not moving in that direction, when we constantly try to put things aside, and we try to move it to litigation. I believe the intent of the city is to try to monitor their funding and their expenditures, and regrettably, I do not believe that at this point in time we are doing that.
I would like to respond and say, we did not file the lawsuit, so that you understand. The tribe did.
But we cleared the issue, could have cleared the issue tonight.
No, we couldn't have, because they're in court.
It's already been filed.
It's out, it's out of our hands. That's why the, both items are inappropriate.
I think that what she's saying is if, if we were to detach with them tonight, that they would drop the suit?
We could have done the ordinance. You know, Vice Mayor, I don't appreciate your laughter at any level.
That's all right, I enjoy it, it is.
Well, that's true, you do, that's regrettable also, but we had an ordinance, we could have done tonight.
So, what you're saying is, if we were to detach tonight, lawsuit would have been dropped, but if we didn't detach tonight, the lawsuit is still on.
I can't speak for that.
I don't know about that, but I'm just.
I can't speak for that.
Well, you're making assumptions one way, but you're not making assumptions the other way.
No, that's, that's not true, I was.
Logic.
So you all must have some insight that we don't.
No.
Okay.
So is that.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, citizens' participation, and there's a young lady here that didn't get a chance to say something last week, and I would like for you to be the first on the deal to under citizens' participation. Thank you for coming back. And be sure and sign in and state your name and talk into that microphone, because you've got that sweet soft voice.
Hi, my name's Barbara Smith, and I've lived in Shawnee since 1976. It's my hometown now, and I love Shawnee, and I'm very interested in everything that goes on here. I've been following the issues that began, I guess officially, in February between the city of Shawnee and the local tribes, and I feel compelled now to step forward and just kind of give my two cents worth. Each of our neighboring tribes could be and have potential to be the best neighbors Shawnee can have, if you will work with them instead of against them. Cities who work with their neighboring tribes prosper. Some examples are Durant with the Choctaws, Talaquan-Muskogee with the Cherokees, Ada, Sulphur, Davis-Ardmore with the Chickasaws, the list goes on, guys. Sulphur is now a destination city. Have you been to Sulphur lately and seen what they've done with the Chickasaws? Lots of new businesses have popped up, nothing to do with the Chickasaws, but these new businesses have popped up because of what the Chickasaws are investing in Sulphur. I think our tribes are interested in the same thing, if they have a chance. Recently, Seminole State College announced expansions are being made, possible by, and I quote the Shawnee New Star in yesterday's paper, "by leadership and support both from the Chickasaw Nation and the Seminole Nation." Seminole State College. We all look to you guys, our city leaders, to set examples for us to follow in working with others, including other governments, together for everyone's benefits. Your actions have created win-lose scenarios with our closest and biggest neighbor. Surely not the best way to run a city. The feds love to award grants for tribal-city joint projects, they love seeing us all work together, isn't that interesting? Shawnee city leaders, please work with our tribal neighbors on joint ventures to improve the quality of life for all of us. We're all in this together. Win-win instead of win-lose. Please give it a try. I hate seeing time, energy, and yes, tax dollars spent on divisive endeavors when so many constructive needs get pushed aside. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Brian, would you hand her that microphone, maybe?
My name is Vicky Wasen, I'm a resident of Shawnee, and I have an issue that I would like to bring to the attention of the commission. I, the residents of Shawnee are able to pay their water bill several ways, and there's two ways that individuals with disabilities can pay. They can either pay by the phone, or they could mail, if they don't have transportation, to come actually to the city to pay their bill. I have tried paying my bill several times, by phone, only to have the money that I pay placed on someone else's bill, and then I end up getting a shut-off notice, then having to call the city to get it straight, because I do get a confirmation number to get that straight. I have since been mailing the bill. My bill is coming late. This time it came on the 10th, I mailed it on the 10th. Columbus Day was on Monday, the bill was due Monday. I don't understand why, if the city is, is knowing that there's no mail and no banks open, they would even put a due date on the 13th, when the electric and gas, you know, they move the date if it falls on a, on a holiday. When I contacted the city on the 17th, on the 16th, well, I got the shut-off notice on the 16th, contacted on Friday, the 17th, to ask had they received my payment, and was told no. Now, I know it does not take, you know, seven days for mail to go four blocks, since I live on Ada Lot, and it's coming down here. Started making payment arrangements, then had the person say, well, wait a minute, let me go and check somewhere else. Then she found that the payment had been received. I'm not understanding, you know, where they look, why I get a shut-off notice, make payment arrangements, you know, I'm trying to find an easy way to pay my bill and know that it's paid, not put on anyone else's account, receive it in a timely manner, so that I can make my payments and not have to pay extra, because it's late.
Let me just ask a quick question. Do we have her address, can you, do you have her address, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Do you have your address, huh?
Yes.
And you brought out some real good points, and I certainly thank you for sharing those with us, and I'm sure that, I know our city manager, and he'll get with the Water Department, and they'll get back with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much. I do think our water. Do you want to let's get here quick? Because I do sometimes get my.
I have a pen on it.
Bit beat.
My old friend down. I really want to have like fourteen minutes.
Just one second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, sir, come forward, please.
My name is Bruce Winston, and I'm an attorney for the Citizen Potawatomi Nation. I had originally planned to come here today to, to talk in support of agenda items five and six, but by what's transpired earlier, that's a moot point, and I understand that. But I did want to clear up a couple of items that I heard in the discussion, and that was this. One, at the time that the petition for detachment was presented to the city with the consents of the various landowners, there was some question as to whether or not Linda Capps could sign on behalf of the nation. Since that decision was made, the city has received, I have received, a copy of a letter from Kevin Washburn, who is the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs, Department of the Interior in Washington, that specifically said that Indian tribes are the beneficial owners of lands held for them in trust by the United States, and as such, they enjoy full and exclusive possession, use, and enjoyment of trust lands. In other words, they also have the right to petition for detachment. The, there was some discussion as to whether or not this board could do anything because of the lawsuit was filed. I can assure you that the people who requested detachment and followed the procedures set out by statute are entitled to a public hearing, a full discussion on the merits, and a decision. They are entitled to that, whether there is a lawsuit pending or not, and I urge this board to take that up at its first opportunity.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
If it has been declared insufficient, can the commission address it even though it's been declared insufficient?
That is just going to be his legal opinion, and may not be the opinion of a judge.
But I'm asking his legal.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. AG, I didn't hear all your questions.
Okay, if, if it has been declared insufficient by the city clerk, now it's in the courts, or it's out of, it's my understanding that it would only come before the city commission if it was declared sufficient by the city clerk.
That's how it sounds like it should work, but the statute says specifically that once the clerk makes the decision whether it is sufficient or insufficient, a notice of filing and the appearance sufficiency or insufficiency of the petition, within ten days following that publication, the governing body shall hold a public hearing on the petition requesting detachment and take such action as the governing body deems appropriate. So it's, there's a finding of sufficiency or insufficiency, but once that determination is made, it still comes before this board for decision.
I didn't know that.
No, well, that's your interpretation of it, I wouldn't understand why you don't want to have a public hearing if it's insufficient.
I have the statute, I'd be more than happy to give it to you.
Well, I understand that's what you, what you read into it, but I'm just saying, in my opinion, why would you want to have a public hearing if it's insufficient? Anyway, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a judge, but that's just my opinion, let's let the court decide.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, not being.
I don't want to be negative or anything else, but I would like to address the lady that talked about, I've been on this commission three terms, and I've tried for the last five years to work with the CPN and Chairman Barrett. I mean, I've personally met with him, I've met with the mayor and the city manager with him, and worked and all results. We did one co-op program together, and that was the bridge down on Gordon Cooper, we did the one side of the bridge. And at that meeting, I talked to him again about another project, and to join venture with the KMSA, and he said he had talked to the KMSA commission, and the KMSA city manager and all this, and I visited with those people, and then never had a word. So we've tried, I mean, I'm telling you, I've done everything that I can do to try to work with them, and it just won't work. My hats off to Durant, and to Ada, and Sulphur, and what the Chickasaws and the Choctaws, I'm familiar with what the Choctaw do, I mean, there's just no end to the things that they do for the schoolchildren, and for the city of Durant, and other places down in Choctaw County. So I, I mean, I can appreciate what you're saying, but we have just tried so many times, I mean, so many times, and you don't, those meetings are not publicized, they've been individually, or made in different places, or in the offices and things like that, so I understand what you're saying, but I'm just telling you that we've, we've been there, we've tried that, it's just not done blatantly without any consideration, I can tell you that for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're here to.
Right, numerous times.
Okay, or citizens' comments?
My name is Greg Quinlan, and I was at that last meeting that you had with, with the tribes, and it wasn't just the Citizen Potawatomi's, it was with the Kickapoo's and the absentee Shawnees. It included the Sackin Fox, even the Ioway came down for that meeting.
How many of the other meetings?
And, oh, I've been to a number of meetings with, with you folks.
I've never been anywhere I was, except for that one.
And in that meeting, one of the commissioners suggested that it was okay if the tribe stuck to arts and crafts, and, and the city commissioners that were in attendance at that meeting offended the tribes so much that the Kickapoo's got up and walked out en masse without saying anything to anybody about leaving. So that wasn't a very good meeting, and then, as in another meeting in this building right here, in the basement of this building, where the tribe offered to fix, or help fix, the lift station, so that the sewer on the south side of the river could, could handle the capacity and could get back into compliance. I believe that lift station has been out of EPA compliance since 1964, and Chairman Barrett first offered to finance it, then he offered to pay for half of it, then he offered, before it was through, he offered to pay the whole thing, so that we could tie on another facility to the sewer system, and he was told he couldn't do it, and that the city wouldn't accept it, because the plant on this side of the river might not be able to handle the capacity. He at that point asked how much it would cost to fix the, the plant on this side of the river, and he was told that it was on the 10-year plan, at which point I asked if that meant that at some point in the next 10 years, the tribe would be able to tie a new facility onto the sewer system, and, and we were told that no, a lot of things on the 10-year plan would never get built. This was at the same time that the city commissioners were asking the citizens, the residents of Shawnee, to fund $20 million worth of bond to build a.
Twenty-nine million.
Twenty-nine million?
Yeah.
Twenty-nine million dollar facility for sports complex on the north side of town, at the same time you were telling the Citizen Potawatomi Nation that you wouldn't allow them to tie ball fields onto the sewer system on the south side of town. So I think it's real clear as to who's being unreasonable in that situation.
I know.
It costs the tribe.
I know exactly.
Three and a half million dollars to build its own sewer system, because the city wouldn't allow them to tie on another facility. Since that time, the tribe has gone ahead and built a gymnasium for the teenagers, for after-school, it's built the ballparks that.
I think your time's up.
That you wanted to build on the north side of town. It has built.
Your time's up, sir.
A bowling center.
Sir, your time's up.
And a convenience store. I don't think I'm out of time yet.
Yes, you are, you have three minutes.
Okay, because last time you shorted us by about three minutes.
You know, I just want to make a comment about the other tribes, sir, I have seen a, I mean, about the water and sewer.
Okay, because last time you shorted us by about three minutes.
You know, I just want to make a comment about the other tribes, sir. I have seen, I mean about the water and sewer, I've seen a certified letter sent to Chairman Barrett saying, "Tell us what size it is and we would bill it," okay? You've had your say, it's my time, okay? And I've seen a certified letter that was sent to him, but he doesn't, y'all don't ever want to talk about those things. And we said we would do it, tell us what size it needed to be, but we never got the size it needed to be done, okay? The other tribes, I'm going to respond right here, and we need to be aware of it. The reason the Chickasaws and the Choctaws are loved by the people, they want to buy their city water, they want to buy their city sewer, they want to be a part of the community.
They have pilots.
And they do tons of things in that matter, so we've heard your side, I think there's two sides to the story, okay?
Mayor, I think you're missing a whole gamut of issues that those tribes work through. And it's meetings like this and it's listening sessions that help to respond to the needs of those people. On Choctaw, I know what we had to go through, and regardless of what Keith Hall says that he is, which I'm taking exception to, I know, I know my people, and there's an exception there.
Okay, all I'm just saying is, sometimes the things are not told that are the true, that are not truthful, and when you see certified letters and you see things, and yet people get up and say things in public, and the public has a tendency to believe those things because it was said and not with the facts. So appreciate your comments, though, okay? We will move on to item number seven. Consider increasing the quantities of work on contract number COSPW-1301. Sidewalk ADA ramps project to have contractor construct sidewalks, trails, facility along Bryant. Do we have any input on that?
Good evening. This item here is a consideration to increase the quantities on a current ADA ramps project that we have going to accommodate the construction of the trails project on Bryant Street. The reason why I'm bringing this as an increase in quantities to a current contractor is because this past summer, in April, we advertised for our ADA ramps and sidewalk project and did not get any bids at that time and had to rebid the project. There was talk about bonding requirements on these type of projects, and we required the bonds that the smaller contractors couldn't meet, so there was no bidders on that one, and we re-advertised and we only got, we got two bids. I included that in your packet, just so you can see a comparison on page seventy-nine, I believe, of the packet, I don't have my packet. The Parathon construction was the low bid at $237,000, and the second low bid was at $509,000. So we felt like, staff felt like we got some really good unit prices for the quantities of work. So when this came up, that the Avedis Foundation was giving $600,000 plus to a trails project. Instead of us having to prepare detailed bids, plans, and whatnot, and they documented in the letter for bid, we decided to do a change order to increase the quantities, and on page seventy-eight of your packet, we went ahead and did that, we identified the quantities necessary to construct the trails along Bryant Street, and we applied the exact same unit prices that we had received from Parathon, and the additional increase in quantities to the contract would be $601,933.50.
Mr. Crywicky, do you think if the other contractor, Rudy Construction, had another chance at the bid, do you think that they might, for a bigger job like that, do you think that they might come down a little more?
They might. I'm not recommending that, just because of the difficulty we did have in getting bids the last two times, and Parathon is a good contractor, they are working with us. We can roll the dice and bid it out. My opinion is this would be, it'd be higher, but...
But couldn't even, Parathon even come down on their prices for such a large job? I mean, I know that they get faster and better when they're doing the work.
They could, but we can't, we have to use the exact same unit prices to this change order.
Right.
I guess we could come back after they got, if they got this additional increase, we could come back, try to negotiate that, but I don't see that working. I mean, for me to do a change order like this, it has to be exactly the unit prices that was previously bid.
Right.
Because it's a unit price contract, it's not a lump sum bid.
I just know that when a lot of companies go for big jobs, they'll really cut here and there so they can get, you know...
That's the difference between like building a building where you do get a lump sum bid, like say Prince Apple, St. Anthony's Hospital under construction now, the contractor gives a lump sum bid, there's not unit prices to go by, so there's a negotiation between the contractor and the owner if there's a change order. In this case, we can't do that, the unit prices are the unit prices. If, I can't negotiate with the contractor, if I did that, it would be against, I think, state statute because then we'd have to re-advertize the project.
Right, I just was thinking, if I was a contractor, like, that's a really great deal for them, to get another $400 and something thousand added to their job.
That's what we're recommending, if the body wants to go out for bids, I mean, we can do that, too. It'd just take a little bit longer.
Well, I was wanting to run it by you, because if it wouldn't be saving us that much money and time, I was wanting to ask you that, you know, if you recommend sticking with Parathon or Paragon because of that.
I wouldn't have put it on the packet if I didn't recommend it, so it's up to you guys to make the decision.
By rebidding it, Commissioner, we'd save what, fifty or sixty thousand dollars on a rebid at that time.
But the cost is fifty or sixty?
We did have one bid on the packet, what Commissioner here referred to, we did have one packet where we only got one bidder.
Right.
And I recommended to reject that bid and go out for bids, and that, again, that's rolling the dice, because if the bids had come back in higher, somebody standing here in front of you is going to have egg-all over the face, but fortunately on that project, the bids came back almost $100,000 cheaper, so...
A lot of companies like bite for big jobs like this, so, you know, they would come after it, but...
Do I have a motion in this matter?
I move, issue the change order.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Aggie, second it, let's vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider resolution to surplus Nortel telephone instruments and authorize staff to solicit bids for their disposal.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Don Lynch, Boarding and Management Director. When we replaced the phone system at City Hall, the annex, and the Public Works Facility, we removed some Meridian Nortel phones from service. We've kept a few of each of the models that we had, so that we have spares for the other city facilities that are not yet on our new phone system, so we'll have those too in case we need a replacement. We have several that are now surplus. We'd like to ask you to declare those surplus and let us offer them for bids by remanufactures. There are three or four companies that I'm aware of, and we had those phones that we solicited proposals from to get replacement phones, and so this is a way to recoup some of our cost on the phone system by offering those for surplus and getting a little bit of money back in the general fund. So there's a resolution here for you this evening to declare those surplus and allow us to offer those for bids. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
About thirty-seven minutes, is that what they're...
Yes, sir. We'll have the switching equipment at a later date, we're still de-wiring that and getting everything ready, so we'll offer that separately, because generally people buy instruments separate from the switches.
Do you know what the return is on, expected return?
It's going to be minimal. They sell for around $25 on a reconditioned model, so I'm assuming we'll get less than that per unit, so it would be pretty small. But it's something, it's hopefully better than if we just put them in the auction.
In a box and...
Yeah, or put them in the trash, so...
I make a motion that we put these in surplus and authorize staff to solicit bids for their disposal.
Second. Have a motion, and a second. Let's vote. Gary, did you vote?
You need to read the resolution, Heather.
I don't think we need to, I bet I can guess what it says. "A resolution to clear Nortel telephone instruments surplus park being no longer needed for city purposes, describing said item, authorizing staff proceed with advertising for sealed bids from the public for sale and disposable said instruments."
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion regarding request for additional funding for the Veterans Memorial located in Woodland Veterans Park.
Mr. Mayor, the commission asked staff to go ahead and touch base with a couple of the folks at the Veterans, they're trying to sue, seek additional funding sources, one of those being Visit Shawnee, Inc. Commissioners may be aware that probably about six months ago, we started that new board, we've got new bylaws, we've got people on board, we're working through all those, we'll have a contract on their agenda here in November. Once we have that contract in November, they will actually be able to do business. We completely reconstituted that board, and so in discussions with Bill Ford and a couple of the members of the Veterans Committee, they're going to seek some additional funding and be coming back, I assume, to you guys at a later date. So with that, we request that you table this indefinitely so that we can continue those discussions.
Do you have an idea of when those discussions might be held, Brian?
Probably won't be before January, because we won't be doing business as Visit Shawnee, Inc. till probably December, and then our first full-fledged meeting where we actually have the ability to do something will probably be in either mid-December or January.
I'm reluctant to table that because I still think we need to visit that issue and look at it before January, if possible.
But Commissioner, it is the commission's pleasure, I'm just giving you my recommendation.
I appreciate that, looking into it, I appreciate.
Did the Parks Department have anything, any help on that, or it was just Visit Shawnee, is who they reached out to?
I mean, I, my initial discussion with the Veterans Committee was that they needed to get their word out, they needed to talk to the civic clubs, they needed to get with, you know, the American Legion, and different places to see if there would be some interest in supporting it continued. So that was my original discussion with it. I don't think that they necessarily knew that Visit Shawnee, Inc. was a possibility just because they didn't see what its mission was, so we had those conversations. You know, again, I mentioned in my memo last meeting that, you know, this project hasn't been in our capital improvement plan to compete, and it sounds like $40,000 shouldn't necessarily, but this comes out of the third penny, and the third penny this year had $750,000 in it to buy police cars, lawn mowers, playground equipment, that type of stuff, with all the debt service that we've saddled that third penny with, with the pool, the expo, airport track, library roof, so, you know, we're taking that third penny and we're squeezing it. So that's why I suggested that the Veterans Committee start looking for some other sources, and if they matched it up with the city potentially, the commission would be more likely to approve it. It is a city-owned park, a lot of times if a nonprofit would come to us wanting to do something, I would probably tell them no right off the bat, simply because it wasn't a city park and we can't spend money in those places. But this is an eligible project, it does bring in tourism, I think they'll be able to talk to them and maybe solicit some other funding in the next sixty days.
I'll make a motion that we table this for sixty days to allow you to have that discussion and to bring back the more information.
This is not an action.
Yeah, it's not an action, item meeting, a motion.
Just discussion.
Okay. However it needs to work on that.
We'll be sure to burd on it, Commissioner.
Okay. Item number ten, acknowledge sales tax report.
I don't mind talking about this more, but unfortunately, the month of October was down $36,000. I've looked at a couple of categories, there's really nothing trending that's, they're all over the place right now. I don't know, you know, retail, food, restaurants, you know, the top ten codes is, it's a little high on one, lower on another, and, but we're down $36,000 this month, our 2.47 percent, and, but compared to 2012, we're up $42,000, so I guess it's a very volatile thing, and right now it's hard to pinpoint where it's decreasing, because there's not as significant, and $35,000, it sounds like a lot of money, but we get about 1.4, we receive $1,428,000, so we're only down 35. So it's a small amount in each category, and there's really not a specific downturn, so I don't know.
Do you anticipate, like, the use tax to make up for some of that when they start doing, ordering materials for the Hunt properties?
Some of the, some of the materials, I did talk to the Oklahoma Tax Commission about that, use tax should go up, plus anything that they buy at Lowe's and all that stuff like that, we'll see it in sales tax. So once the projects start going, David, we should see significant...
Make up for it.
Yeah, hopefully.
Walls are going up.
Hmm?
I was out there today, walls are going up, yeah.
They worked all weekend, I think.
You know...
Last week there wasn't any walls.
The news, the news has been full of how soft food sales are. Walmart and Burger King are going at it, you know, Burger King's running...
I mean, I was in Sa, I don't, I try to shop as much as I can in Shawnee, I don't live in Shawnee, but I was at Walmart Saturday afternoon, and it wasn't very busy.
Well, I think, I think things have slowed up a bunch, and that's what, why I have, I'm afraid of spending money and doing some of these things that we need to really wrestle with.
When that oil price starts down, which it's done...
Yeah.
...there's a lot of havoc.
They're probably watching the Sooners and Cowboys lose.
That's true.
Well, thank you for...
They're getting better off.
It's all right.
You should have gone to Walmart.
They're throwing those alcohol things.
One additional thing, Mayor and Commissioners, our contract with Hunt Properties also includes them showing us where they spent money in town, it'll show their sales tax as well, so we'll be looking to compare what the Oklahoma Tax Commission tells us with our contract with them.
But you also have to remember, it is delayed a little bit, it'll probably take two, three months before we can really start looking, if not longer, so...
Okay. Item number eleven is consider bids slash proposals for the dispatch center of City of Shawnee and open them, and then we'll do the co-ed roofing.
Well, that's good. Pretty clear.
That's what we always say. Lieutenant Mason Wilson from the Police Department, we solicited bids for the construction of the new dispatch center, we received two bids back. The first bid is from Sage Mill Construction LLC out of Meeker for $218,000. The second bid was from Ben Hayes Construction out of Goldsby for $401,361. Staff recommends that we defer till the next meeting to view the bids.
Looks like you sent out six bids or more, and you only got two back.
Right.
People are busy.
Okay, so you're asking for it to be deferred. Do we need a motion on that?
Shall I move?
Second.
Motion to second to defer this action? Let's vote. Item B, well, I guess it passed, sorry. Item B is co-ed roofing project, Mr. Bryce?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is for the co-ed roofing project, and within this bid, it has an ad alternate if there was enough money to... The second bid was from Ben Hayes Construction out of Goldsby for four-hundred-and-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one. Staff recommends that we defer till the next meeting to view the bids.
Looks like you sent out six bids or more?
Yeah.
And you only got two back?
Right.
People are busy.
Okay, so you're asking for it to be deferred?
Do we need a motion on that?
Shall I move? Second. Motion to second to defer this action. Item B, oh, I guess it passed, sorry. Item B is co-ed roofing project, Mr. Bryce?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is for the co-ed roofing project and within this bid, it has an add alternate if there was enough money to do part of the, the City Hall rough. We, we solicited bids from several, as you can see the bidder's list, we received four back. First one being today's roofing from Moore, Oklahoma, for the main roof, co-ed, twenty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and the add-in alternate would be twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Coats Roofing Company out of Seminole, Oklahoma, co-ed would be twenty-nine thousand, five-hundred. City Hall would be twenty-nine thousand, five-hundred. Moore Salt Construction out of Bolivar, Missouri, for the co-ed would be twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and with the add, and the add alternate for City Hall would be twenty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Robbins Roofing out of Mustang, Oklahoma, co-ed portion is nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five and twenty-one cents and the City Hall portion would be twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine and seventy-nine cents. Steph?
So, James, remind me, we lowered their rent so that they could do some remodeling, was this part of our responsibility or is this part of their responsibility?
Yeah, this is part of our responsibility and it, it wasn't part of their scope as to the remodel. The building is ours and we've had a problem with this section of the roof.
Have they done the remodeling?
They have started the remodeling, yes. They're, they're probably, last time I was over there, I would imagine fifty percent, maybe a little more complete with it.
What type of roofing are you talking about, built-up roof?
This is a TPO and we're pulling off what's on there, what it has right now is kind of a spray foam type roof that, that generally has to be recoded every five years and we have a lot of roofs with that on it and that can get quite expensive. So, we've had pretty good luck with this, we've done this on the library roof, we've done this on the annex roof and it, it's kind of a, the way that I'm moving with all these roofs where we can get a fifteen, twenty-year warranty on, on all of these.
Well, I know that culture of Seminole, they travel all over the world and do roofs for Walmart, so, I mean, I'm about to price, so you hear it.
One price fits all there.
So James, are you wanting to postpone this and let you study these?
Yeah, my recommendation is to defer this to the next Commission meeting so we can look over the bids.
Have a motion by Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor?
Second.
Harrod and a second by Lisa Shaw, I'm getting it here. And I guess we'll vote. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
Okay. I will recess the meeting and call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Hall?
Second.
Second. Nice way, Harrod, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two, consideration of approving an amendment for the nineteen-ninety-six lease between the Shawnee Airport Authority and Vibe Broadband ALLC.
Mary Ann, have you looked at this lease and approved it, the channel?
I think I have a concern on the table, we've got some dates that are kind of mixed up here. I'd like to also try to understand if someone can educate me why we're looking at twenty years on this.
Sure. Well, the, and I'll get twenty-year, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit of confusion that I can clear up and, you know, on, on the original lease, there's some, somebody went with a pen and marked out some dates and added some other dates and stuff like that, so it is a bit confusing, but here's, here's how I perceive it. In ninety-six, Falcon Media, they were a cable provider here in Shawnee and they signed a lease from, from nineteen-ninety-four to expire in two thousand and nine. Of course, they were bought out by Allegiance Cable Company and they're leasing three acres of surplus airport property. Allegiance was bought out by BCI Broadband and just here recently, Vibe bought out BCI, the same company, they just, they just changed names. So, in ninety-four, they, they signed a fifteen-year lease and it was to renew for an additional fifteen years in two thousand and nine. In two thousand and seven, well, on the original lease, I think it was a typo, it was supposed to expire in two thousand and nine, it originally said two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and seven, it was amended to read to expire in two thousand and nine and days later, there was a memorandum on the lease where it went back to two thousand and fourteen. So regardless, the lease needs to be renewed and with the renewal, there's also some amendments that both parties would like to amend to the lease, does that kind of clear it up a little bit?
And, and that's raising the rate from five hundred to a thousand, right?
That's true.
And the dates will be fixed?
The dates will be fixed and, and another amendment that we wanted to do, instead of renewing it for an additional fifteen years, we're going to renew it for an additional twenty years.
What's the plus of that?
They wanted a little bit longer. I came back with twenty years. I'm not sure if there's any, any pros or cons.
Does that automatically roll over if they sell out to somebody or do we have to approve that?
It would have to, I believe it would have to be approved.
As far as I, I don't know, this has obviously changed hands a lot.
It may change hands again.
And may change again. Generally, when these roll over and since I've been here when they've changed, we enter into as an agreement with them that they're assuming, because they're picking up rights to the right of way, the, the lease, all those things, and they sign an agreement with us and we, we seem injured as some due diligence about whether these are, people are worth it and I think you look at it too and then we enter into an agreement with them where they take over the predecessor's interest.
Just to turn key operation.
Right, and I believe BCI actually signed a consent to assignment of lease agreement when Allegiance went over to BCI and since BCI has the same company as Vibe, there doesn't need to be any type of...
Really a name change.
Just a name change, which is on the amendment.
But the twenty-year terms, that typical for like the airport, what do you do?
Usually the, whatever, whatever term the lease is for, there may be a renewal period after that expires, it's usually the same as the initial term. They had it for fifteen years and originally they were supposed to renew for an additional fifteen years. I think they were wanting a little bit longer lease on it and we agreed to twenty years.
The, the three acres for one thousand dollars, is that comparable to other businesses that we lease to in that area?
Yeah, we actually had that property appraised, they had the property appraised and we negotiated, kind of met in the middle on that.
And is there a way to project how that will be impacted by market trends?
Yes, absolutely. Typically, we'll, we'll go by the either it's consumer price index or just by land appraisals and, and comparing it to other leases close by, land leases that are close by. But within the, the original lease, which will go unchanged, every five years, the airport...
Reevaluates.
Reevaluates and sets the, sets the price.
It's limited what you can actually do with that.
That's true and, and there, you know, Vibe did express some interest in purchasing the land, of course, we'd have to give the FAA's permission to do that, but at this time, they're just wanting to renew and extend the lease.
So when it talks to the issue of premises and the privileges herein, what is the privileges that they're referring to?
Are you, are you speaking about the amendment?
Article, in item five.
Item five, yeah, and I can, I can provide some context for that. Article five of the original lease or the amendment?
The item number five in your...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that, that refers to, in the event that Vibe breaches the contract, we would give them ninety-day notice to vacate the premises instead of ten, it might be a little difficult to move their operations in ten days. And also, within that, if we do, if the FAA does give us permission to sell the land, Vibe would have the first right of refusal. And, of course, the name change, extended to twenty years from fifteen and doubled the rent from five hundred to a thousand per month.
Any more questions? Cheryl, entertain a motion in this matter.
So move, or I move, yeah.
Mr. Daxtrup? And second by Commissioner Hall. Motion carries. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and I will call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I will declare we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Mr. Daxtrup, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Harrod, let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority and then I will adjourn our full meeting. Thank each and every one of you for coming.